Can you tell if the word has been admitted? No one was at it, which is why I'm asking.
There's no one on.
Perfect. I'd like to call the zoning commission regular meetings order on August 3rd, 2023 at 7:01 PM. This meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes and the written minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record of this meeting. On behalf of our virtual audience, we ask the public joining us in person to approach the podium in the event that they would like to speak. They will need to announce their name and address prior to speaking. Additionally, we ask the audience to save personal conversation for after the meeting as additional voices cause confusion for those attending virtually. Judy, can we have a roll, please?
Fisher.
Here.
Crew.
Here.
Marzullo.
Here.
Manley.
Here.
Engelman.
Here.
In the audience are Mr. Cato, trustee Augustine, zoning inspector Wilson, and is anyone virtually?
No. Our first order of business is the zoning commission regular meeting minutes from July 6th, 2023. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them and are there any requested edits?
I move to accept the minutes.
Second. Moved by Cruz, second by Marzullo, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes have been approved as written. Jumping to old business, I sent to everyone a copy of the amendments that were made in response to the June meeting that we had. There weren't that many additional changes. Can you enable me for screen sharing, please? I think the only changes that were made from our June meeting occurred on pages 50, 52, and 93 of our book. I got it. So on page 50, which dealt with conservation districts, if you remember, we discussed changing the minimum setback from the right of way from 30 feet to 50 feet. Again, just giving that extra safety buffer for potential children running up towards the road. We also proposed a minimum rear side yard setback of 10 feet. I think that there was a typo, it was a small typo, I think it was B in the copy that I sent to you, but I've corrected in this version. So the minimum rear yard setback shall be 10 feet. The next proposed change occurred on page 52 and related to water. So we had an item 10, which was sewage disposal. And we discussed adding a provision for drinking water to conserve to conservation developments requiring that the water be provided through public central water. So we amended that to say the development shall be provided drinking water through public central water. That language, public central water, had appeared elsewhere in our code, so I just used that language to describe our.
Could I just maybe, for sake of parallelism, shall be served? You know, like number 10, development shall be served by.
Served by.
By.
Public central water.
Right, I think it's probably sufficient.
Perfect. And the last change was way down on page 93 of our book. And that dealt with basically a rebuilding of the home in the event that there was a fire or other destruction of the home. The page numbers don't align with the Word document numbers, so it's better find where. And there it is for the restoration of a damaged building or structure. The period of time for restoration used to be a requirement that it be completed within two years of the damage or destruction. We discussed that that might not be enough time considering how long insurance processing sometimes takes. And therefore, we suggested the amendment to such restoration shall commence within a period of two years. Any concerns about any of that proposed language before we move on? Beautiful. Okay, that moves us to new business, a review of automobile service station. To give you some background on this, move this out of the way. Automobile service station, the definition appears in our book. If anyone has it available. Page six, automobile service station, a place, and this is the definition, a place where gasoline, kerosene, or any other motor fuel or lubricating oil or grease for operating motor vehicles is offered for sale to the public and deliveries are made directly to into motor vehicles, including greasing or oiling on the premises. A portion of the building may be used for repair to motor vehicles in which there is no painting of cars or body or fender work done. And so this was quite an old definition to a time where there were fueling stations and connected to those fueling stations were repair shops. That language has allowed for proposals where we saw what would more or less be a service repair shop such as a Conrad's, a Valvoline Oil to come in and say, we're using a portion of it for repair of motor vehicles and another portion for for sales and therefore it's not all devoted to repair, even though it doesn't have any component to selling gasoline. So with that in mind, we've proposed some language and let me just hang on, let me say a couple more things with respect to it. So automobile service station as written in our code is permitted within the business district and the B1 and B2 districts, and that's noted on page. 66, thank you, no, 67, very top of 67, automobile service stations. And then if you turn to the industrial districts, the I 2 district, which is on page 79, allows for under H automobile Repair and Service and repair and sales of commercial vehicles. And so with that in mind, again, if we look at the map quickly, the automobile service stations as it's written now would be allowed in the B1 district, which is mostly filled at this point, the B1 along West 130th and center, that is, the question being discount drug mart. And that corner is still our technically Hinckley property, it's under subject of annexation right now. And so we'll see if discount drug mart ever goes there, if the annexation goes through. The B1 is also downward Buzzard's Cove located at Hinckley Hills in Bellis. And then the B2 district is up at the top corner of the township along Boston Road and West 130th. So currently that would be where automobile service stations are permitted. And then the I2 district is pretty large, it's the area along 303 adjacent, but not including the Aldi. And then I2 along West 130th. And again, for the I2 district, auto repair and service and repair and sales of commercial vehicles are permitted. So what was it, three years ago, Mr. Marzullo? It was three years, right?
Sure.
Somewhere around there. We developed a proposed text for for changing this. And so here is a copy of the proposed text, and I believe I sent this to you a little over a month ago, so you've hopefully had a time, opportunity to review it. What we did is we separated refueling traditional gas stations from repair and service. And so we had a definition of refueling and recharging stations, which was defined as a place where the primary purpose is for the sale or distribution of fuel or electricity for the powering primarily of non-commercial motor vehicles and associated building may be used for retail sales. And then we had the automotive repair and service, which was a place primarily engaged in the repair, maintenance of motor vehicles, trailers, and similar large mechanical equipment, including paint, body, and fender repairs, which is conducted within a completely enclosed building. One thing to note there is under this new definition, as we had proposed it, we are allowing for paint, body, and fender repair under the old definition of automobile service station explicitly excluded those from being allowed. So in some ways, we broadened our definition in that we're incorporating encompassing additional things. But in some ways, we are we're narrowing it because again, we've delineated between refueling stations and repair stations. We then decided at that point, or recommended at that point, that within the B1 district, and remember, B2 did not allow any of this at that point. But in the B1 district, we changed it from allowing automobile service stations to refueling and recharging stations. Again, at this point, the B2, which incorporates town center as well as that area up along West 130th, Boston, did not allow for refueling or charging stations, but when we amended the text to make a B3, we decided B2, it made sense to have gas stations since there are gas stations at two of the corners up there in Strongsville and in Brunswick, I believe. We also, in the I district, if my knowledge cooperates. In the I2 district, there was, and it's called, in the I2 district, we changed that to automotive repair and service to be consistent with our definition. And then we just removed repair and from the sales of commercial vehicles because it was already encompassed within the automotive repair and service. This went to Medina County Planning, and Medina County Planning ultimately voted to not recommend this change to our text. I think the predominant, and Mr. Marzullo might be able to speak a little bit more to this, but the predominant rationale for that is related to the idea that if you look at where oil change places typically are, they're often in business districts and not in industrial districts, industrial districts might have more of the auto body repairs items, but not the the oil change. And so there was this discussion of major repair and minor repair. And in fact, we had had that discussion even before we advanced these definitions and we ultimately decided we didn't want to try to delineate between major and minor. But that was the concern that was raised by the planning commission and ultimately, while they voted to approve many of our text amendments, this one, they voted to remove from the proposed text amendment as their recommendation. When it got to the township trustees, the township trustees really looked at this and felt that that we were getting ready to undergo a comprehensive plan audit and that maybe this change shouldn't occur until that comprehensive audit was complete. The comprehensive audit didn't officially begin until January of last year, however, there was talk of it way back in June and it's in the meeting from the township trustees. As it turns out, the comprehensive plan had no discussion related to this at all. And so I don't, we certainly can revisit it again. I'm generally not an advocate for revisiting things that we've recently advanced and that we've not had approved. However, I think this one's a little different in the sense that this one wasn't, it was not not approved because of they disagreed with the proposal, it was not approved because they felt that we should wait for some other item to occur, which has now occurred. So that's where we're at on this, that's the history of this language. And the question is, do we want to advance this same language again? Do we want to modify it? Do we want to have, you know, look at major and minor and delineate those two? Or do we not want to address this topic at this point?
Can you go back up to the definitions?
I do think in part of our discussion about major and minor was it's a subjective standard, and I think that that still applies. I was trying to brainstorm if we did go down that route, how we could delineate major and minor. And the one, one thing that I thought of looking at some texts is that if we wanted to go down that that road, we could say that a minor does not have cars stored outside overnight, and at least then we're trying to delineate what would be a minor repair would be a repair that you're in and out within days' time, so the parking lot is free from overnight vehicles. Oh, and then major would be anything that requires a multi-day stay. Just one, I'm trying to find some bright line there as a way of delineating the two.
So with with that line, typically the way a lot of these establishments work is you're parked outside without any work being done. So it's not that you know that it's being, we would have no idea whether or not it was the main, major or minor, just because a car is parked outside. And then when they pull it into a bay, it can be on that lift for weeks.
Right, right.
And we'd have no, from the outside, you wouldn't see major work being done because no cars would be allowed to sit in the parking lot overnight, right? So any cars that they want to keep there overnight that they're servicing the next day have to be brought into a bay. So visually, it would appear as though it's, it's a, it's a quick temporary solution. It might be, some cars might be there for multiple days, but from the X outside, you would not know that's the case. If we wanted to go there, again, I'm not necessarily suggesting that, I was just trying to find some way of us creating a, you know, something that would delineate those two that would be enforceable.
I feel like it would be putting undue hardship on mechanic to say, no, you can't have a queue in your parking lot. And so I'm, I'm still partial to, let's go with what we came up with. Part of that being, one, one of the key factors when this all came out was also, okay, well, someone's trying to do something that fits under this definition currently, which when we said, all right, yeah, but it would be grandfathered in. It's really not applicable, it's, again, we're more focused on, all right, well, what if they were to do something like this? Or Buzzard's Cove is, do we want one that? As far as our current definition, our current definition needs to change. The only service stations that operate like this are for big industrial trucks. And it is the exact definition of what we have right now. So I mean, I do think it's important that we change it, especially since we do have a very large warehouse there with a ton of trucks in and out.
Where's the, which we're.
All the, all we, yep.
So that would be in the I district, which we were allowing to have this.
Yes, correct. But what I'm saying is that right now, if they want to put it in the B2 right next to it, they absolutely could.
B1. What's that?
B1, right?
Yeah. Yes, sorry.
They could put in the B2 as well, but B2s further up.
And it is certainly more developed portion of the. And correct me if I'm wrong, I wasn't here for that one, but we've actually had two, two different entities approach using this condition, right? Suburban transport was attempting to use this definition and tire max.
I can't recall if suburban was actually using this definition.
No.
I don't believe they were. Because it wasn't an actual service station.
Go ahead, Mr. Manley.
But they, I think they did change oil and change tires and that was.
Right, and that's why they were.
On their own, on their own vehicles.
I don't, I don't believe we're using that, that definition for that one. It's been a while, I can, I can look through some of the.
Well, there's been at least one who has tried to use the existing definition, potentially two.
Yes, and you know, when we started talking about major versus minor, I happened to pass a TireMax in, in Kent. So I stopped in, checked it out, it's a nice station. Asked them, you know, what kind of work do you do? Oh, we can do it all, we can drop your train, pull out your engine, do this, that, and the other, that's all pretty major work.
But I do see the delineation between, you know, where do you find your oil change source? What districts and other cities and towns, when you get your oil changed, where is it at? It's in a business district, it's not an industrial district. You know, I think that the most obvious case of this is Strongsville, right? They have a giant industrial district by the Folds Parkway, but nothing, you know, that area is really designed to keep consumer traffic out, really that area is predominantly made for your trucks and your commercial vehicles to go in and out of. And the consumer focused businesses, like your, your typical oil change places are found in your business districts, not in your industrial districts. And as this definition would have provided, or this proposed amendment would have provided, it would have moved all of that to the industrial district. Now, we're a little unique in that our industrial district is right by our business district. And so when you look at, you know, that, and in that, you know, from that perspective, certainly, what's the difference between a business and industrial district, they're right next to one another, but I can understand looking at it, you know, as just in a vacuum of what is industrial district, what is a business district? Why is automobile repair and service in an industrial district?
I think ultimately what it came down to was as you're coming into Hinckley, is that the first impression? Is that what we're looking for? Do we want a an oil change facility to be the first impression?
That's kind of hard to place. As you're looking at a zoning area and they can use a variety of things.
Absolutely.
Would you change the zoning for the possibility of it?
Changing, changing the definition is more of, all right, what was the original intent when this was ready?
Right.
Was the original intent to have, okay, we can have a gas station as we know it now? Or was it, okay, we're going to have a complete teardown overhaul garage?
But even in the 50s, many of those, you know, I'm sure that this garage that's right here in, in town center, they probably did full teardowns of cars back in the day, right? It was a single garage, but yes, they contemplated having, allowing for full teardowns of vehicles, not necessarily on the industrial commercial scale, because those garages wouldn't accommodate it, but certainly on the consumer scale. I think that would, that would have been pretty common, you probably would have seen four junk cars sitting outside being in different stages of being torn apart. I don't know that that was that uncommon for those small service stations. I mean, the one that I can think of right away is if you're familiar with Strongsville across from Costco, there's a marathon that has a four or five bay service station, it's a gas station, service station, and these have cars outside all the time that I, I, you know, I agree with you, I don't think that that would be a very sightly thing to look at as you come into town center. But it's a service station right there.
I think that our revised definitions are good. I want to keep them. I think we spent a lot of time looking at it.
We did.
So.
And keep the district's proposals the same as well, but allow the automobile refueling, recharging station in B1, B2, and the automobile repair and service in the industrial district? Resubmit that?
Yeah.
That table?
So really, you know, I wasn't part of that early discussion and I liked the new definitions and I think they make sense, you know, in today's world, it has changed. So that marathon is still kind of now more the exception, where you have, you know, repair bays, it's really look at sheets, it's all about fueling and munchies. You know.
Lottery tickets.
Lotto tickets and beer and wine. But then you go down 303 and there's multiple service, you know, stations, and so they've, they've come to be separated, so.
Absolutely.
And major, minor, that would be, that's two.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, no, it requires policing, and I don't know if that's really what you want to do.
Right, and it's very easy for a company to transform from one or the other, you know, they might come in and say, I intend to do a minor repair, and then over time you see it becoming more and more major repairs. So it's very easy to, to, to go in that direction.
Right, so my only question on those definitions, on the, the refueling station.
Show me a.
It says primarily non-commercial. So what is intended by non-commercial? Does that mean that if your license plate says truck on it? Or you're talking about?
So when, when you're saying primarily non-commercial, you're going to have, like, let's say it's a gas station, it's going to have nine pumps. Of those nine pumps, at least six of them are going to be unleaded. Virtually every commercial vehicle runs off diesel. Most commercial vehicles need diesel and DEF, diesel exhaust fluid. If it's going to have those nine pumps and only three of them are diesel, you're not going to get a ton of commercial activity. And without having DEF, you're going to get significantly less commercial activity.
So as sheets, obviously sheets has some commercial traffic in it, but it's primarily consumer-based sales. Whereas if you went to a Love, for instance, or one of those large truck stops, the bays are much taller and they're much more geared towards the large semis coming in.
And the vast majority of times, they actually have the commercial side for the everyday driver and then a separate entrance with a completely separate bank of pumps for the semis.
Right.
They, even the professional drivers come in from a different entrance, they have showers, they have all sorts of stuff, it's, it's a pretty significant.
And so that was, that's, that was really where that came from, because you could very well see a truck type, a truck stop type facility wanting to be located somewhere along 271 or 71, and so we have some geographic proximity that might be suggestive of a useful spot for a truck stop. And so we wanted to avoid having the definition that would enable a truck stop to be there. Good question, we worked on that language for a long time.
That was concerning.
And then the other thing to note here is I know that we talk about alternative energy quite frequently. And this is for a place where the primary purpose is for the fuel and for refueling more electricity. And so this doesn't preclude a single, you know, a restaurant from having a charging station in it, because the primary purpose of that is not charging, the primary purpose is a restaurant and they have this secondary use of recharging. But if a, if a station went in with full, you know, a Tesla's bank went in and they were, that, that, that parcel was primarily being used for recharging electric vehicles, then it would fall within, within this is how I interpret that. Truthfully, I think.
Truthfully, I think you can probably. Put a single or double. Recharging bay on virtually any property.
Yeah.
Because it's more or less just running electrical lines. When you're talking about a fueling station, you have buried tanks, and I mean, it's, it's quite an undertaking to put those in.
Or moving to the future, you're going to have a very large grid, you're probably have a transformer or something on site. To enable you to deliver the electricity, so. That's the distinction. Perfect. So if there's no objections, hang on, Mr. Pearl.
Okay.
Then we'll move, move forward with, with this. Is that good? Mr. Pearl.
Uh, Richard Pearl King Road. I wonder if you'd consider breaking down automotive refueling and recharging station? Because. Like Foster's or the new Donut Shop, if they had a recharging station, it would bring in business. People would go in and get twenty minutes of energy.
And, and that's just where I went with, that's why I made the comment that I, that Foster's or the Donut Shop, they're not in the primary purpose of. Providing electricity to refill your vehicle, so those would be secondary ancillary uses. To the primary use, which is selling donuts or selling, or a restaurant. Um, in contrast, if you had a very large bank, you know, your, your gas station that you're converting to a fully. Electric recharging station, well, then you fall within automobile recharging and fueling, that's how I would look at that.
The fault I see is that, uh, you're not allowing recharging in the downtown business B three.
Sure we are, because we're, we're not preventing.
We're not preventing it, that's only if the pri- this definition only applies if the primary purpose of that sub, that lot. Is refueling and recharging, the primary purpose of, if you put in one charging station in downtown Hinckley. That doesn't make the primary purpose of that lot be refueling and recharging. It's still the primary purpose is a restaurant, so anyone in downtown Hinckley, any of these government buildings, they could put in. A refueling sta- you know, a recharging station, because that's still not the business that they're in, they're not seeking to do that to generate revenue. Uh, like a gas station.
And, and I would, I would go so far as to say the project that we discussed last month. If they put in twenty chargers, it still is not the primary purpose of the space. So it's an ancillary benefit that they provide potential customers, right? It's almost a marketing scheme to bring them in and have them say, okay, hey, now I'm gonna come in and I'm gonna get my steak, I'm gonna go over here and do this, I'm gonna go, go do this. So that it's not their, the primary purpose would not be to charge.
So in the B three now, since the last year, are you allowing refueling? Automotive refueling?
Yeah, i- i- if, as long as it was just an ancillary use. I don't think Inspector Wilson would deny anyone the right to put in a recharging.
Okay, I'm satisfied.
Just, just to further that, if, let's say that we did break that down, I still think the zoning commission would probably say. Recharging stations, if that's your primary purpose, also should not be in the B three. Um, because I would think that we would want those wherever gas stations are located. So to break them down, I don't think provides any benefit to us either of, uh, uh, you know, in terms of what business uses would be permitted. Anywhere within the township.
So what, what I'm seeing, what I'm seeing in, in the, uh. The new code that has the B three town center. Is that automotive service station is neither conditional or provisional.
Correct, because again, if that was the primary purpose of that lot, it would not be permitted. But it doesn't mean that you can't have. Items that are secondary ancillary uses on the property. As long as their primary use is one of the conditional or permitted uses.
Can this new nine-acre business development put in gas pumps? As a secondary, non-primary?
Theoretically, yes, I, I don't think that we've ever seen business do that, but theoretically.
Okay. Okay.
Any other comments in view of that? Then I will incorporate this language back into the proposed amendment, I'll send that to you again for the next meeting, so you have the opportunity to review it. And, and we'll move forward. Chairman's report, uh, Blue Stone Concept Plan, this is the preliminary amendment that we reviewed last month. Uh, they've changed names again, I think now they're called Blue Stone instead of Waterway three or Watermark three or whatever it was before. Um, I continue to refer to it as the Town Center Project, so I'll continue to list it on our books as the Town Center Project to make it easy for us. They submitted a concept plan for the Plant, the Medina Planning Commission, this is a concept plan. Oh, thank you. This is a concept plan, so this is not the plan that will be reviewed by the full planning commission yet. Uh, it's just a concept plan, it's a discussion with planning services. Um, they've requested comments by middle of next week. Uh, this has been sent to you, and if you had any comments, please provide them to Suzanne, I think I asked for those to be provided by. Uh, Monday, it might be Tuesday, whatever the date was on her email would be great, just so that we have an opportunity to compile them. Uh, the, the comments that I intend currently to submit is that the preliminary amendment or preliminary site plan was approved by the zoning commission. Uh, there were questions and concerns regarding fire access and turning radiuses. There were questions and concerns regarding the front elevation, and there were questions and concerns regarding whether the use of the amplifiers are permitted. Or not permitted use within the B three district. Um, are there any other comments that you believe now I should incorporate? And as I say, you have opportunities to still send your comments to Suzanne and I'll try to compile them, but those were the comments that I presently intend to submit.
Well, what about the, um, architectural standard?
That was the elevation, front elevation.
Oh, okay, when you said front elevation, I thought of topographical.
Oh, no, no, the, the building elevation.
So it's not just the elevation.
It's the appearance.
Yeah.
It's the architecture style. In, in, in uniformity with the surrounding area.
Right.
And that was the.
Right.
The phrase.
Okay.
You know, um. Judy did a wonderful job documenting our discussion last month, she did. And maybe we can just append the minutes so that they get an idea of.
Yeah, you know.
You know, the issues that were raised.
They provide reports, and so our comments are generally in a bullet point form that are incorporated with the reports. I can cer- certainly refer, um, Denise Testa to our minutes. Um, but I still feel like we should be submitting bullet point items that can then be incorporated into the plans. Just like any of the other comments to come in from other agencies.
And if they have questions regarding any of those bullet points.
Yeah.
Yes, for clarification.
Yeah, and Denise will also call me in advance if she has any questions about any of the topics that we've referenced. Or if she has any questions, oh, she's, she'll call me.
And just for clarification purposes, if any of you attend, you're attending as a zoning commission member, because it's not open to the public. You're being notified as a zoning commission member that the meeting is even occurring and allowed the comments. So just for clarification.
Yeah, this is not the planning commission meeting, which is the one that's open to the public and. Which then provides minutes afterwards and, and actually has votes. Um, anything else on that one?
Not particularly this one, but just a procedural question related to those planning concept designs. Um, so speaking with Denise Testa, uh, she says some other townships, they will actually email out. Those agenda items directly to zoning commission members in townships if you made that request. And I'm just asking about doing that, so that it just kind of cuts some of the time delay. Um, cause we get these things and then it's like, by time you ask Susan to send it out to us and those steps happen. It could cut a couple of days off of.
So we had an internal discussion on this as well after that, and Denise did contact me to ask me about that. And, and my feeling on that was that I would prefer to make sure that. I, I don't even send them out myself, I generally have Suzanne do it, because I want all communications to flow in and out of Suzanne and not. Someone send it to another party that's on that initial email. Um, so that's why I prefer that we maintain the process that we've had. Um, generally, I, I don't think that the issue you raised has occurred, it occurred on the last one, because. Uh, Suzanne was out and in the future, I'll just, if I'm still chair, I'll just forward them along on that point as opposed to relying on Suzanne. Although even I think on the last one, you still had, after she forwarded it over a weekend and a few days. Uh, to submit comments to me before I could provide them to the planning services. Um, but in general, just like this one, there's two weeks of time herself for you guys to provide comments. It's really about just maintaining a flow of traffic, I think, makes sense for us. Anything else on that? So our next regular zoning commission meeting will be September seventh, twenty twenty-three. I unfortunately cannot make that meeting, so you'll have to. Have that meeting, the, the, the only other options would be, uh, cancel the meeting, which is certainly an option. There's, there's, uh, as far as we know, nothing preliminary amendment, concept plans or final site plans to take place at that meeting. Or the other option would be to, um, schedule, set a time now. For a special meeting for the purposes of the regular meeting, but as I said, I think that you'd be fully capable, and if nothing else, you can just review, approve the minutes. And shut down the meeting if you want, it's up to you.
What does everybody want to do?
Now that you're retired, you've got the time.
You might even need to actually.
That, that's a good point.
Everyone's got an opinion in the room.
Oh, we'll just have it, we'll have a meeting.
Perfect, it'll be September seventh, twenty twenty-three. Uh, we, at this time, we don't have any new business, do you want me to put new business on the agenda for September seventh? Do you just want to plan on reviewing the minutes and recapping? These amendments that I will incorporate into the text I can send to you in advance, or, uh, do you want to just start a new topic?
Do you guys want to start a new topic next month?
A topic.
Put a topic on there.
What's the list?
It was sent to you.
I've been in the truck all week.
No, it's sent to you like a month ago, two months ago, let me see. The other thing I think we should start considering is how many more topics we want to discuss before we probably move forward with. A proposal or at least working on these again, cause I know we're gonna have to revisit the B four again. Um, and flush that out a little bit more, and there were other, some, some other items that we flagged, and at some point, we probably need to stop. Adding additional items and just move forward with a proposed text amendment, um, let's see. What would I call that, service?
Yeah, I'd like to finalize on the ones that we. Think we're done, but we said we'd go back and revisit it.
And there's several.
Important to finalize those and get them completed. I'd like to do that before the fall, or.
We're already approaching in the fall.
I'd like to do that in the fall. Yeah, it is fall.
Yeah, it will be fall when we meet again. So on my list, I had conservation developments, which we, which we did, the automobile service stations, which we did. Nuisances, senior housing and repairing setbacks. I think nuisances might be a decent one for you. Just a softball.
I don't express me, uh, are you serious, you want to do that one? We could do that, well, what's senior house?
Look, I. Yeah, senior housing is the idea of, do we want to remove multifamily dwellings from? Uh, the B one district, remember how senior, senior housing allows for multifamily? Um. And so I think that's the discussion about that. Nuisances, there's a wide range of topics, I think you've seen comments on that.
Go ahead.
And repairing. Want to do nuisances?
We can, we can.
You can start.
Start it.
You know, again, the, the whole point is not necessarily to make any amendments, right? You have a talk, discussion about a topic and, and you might decide.
Not to do.
To not do anything, um, and that's perfectly fine, these are just topics that we wanted to explore, that's what a commission does, is they explore topics to see if it. It seems prudent to make a change to.
Right.
The code based upon what we've heard on a topic. So I will add new bit nuisances to the new business for next time.
Just so you know, I may not be here at that meeting either, so if there is a protocol or procedural question. Or something specific to nuisances, I almost likely not concern.
Oh, okay, well, happy birthday coming up. We'll just wing it.
Perfect. Those are the only items that I have, uh, Ms. Crew, anything?
No, I don't have anything, thank you.
Mr. Marzullo.
Uh, not at this time.
Mr. Manley?
Nope, nothing.
Ms. Ingleman?
Nothing.
Ms. Chet? Augustine Wilson?
No.
Perfect, anything from the floor? Perfect. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at seven forty-six PM.
So.
Moved by Ingleman?
Second.
Seconded by Crew, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.